Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Dover Select Board meeting to order for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. First order of business is public comments. I'm seeing nothing. Yes, Jeanette?
Well, there are more FYI's, but anyways, I just wanted to relay that Sarah and I are going to meet tomorrow, hopefully, weather permitting, with Chuck Berisi from Efficiency Vermont, to talk about the heat pump central air possibilities in this building. Also, I did hear from Hoffer Consulting about the well testing. They were hoping to get out there this week, but with the weather, they're going to put it off till next week. They're going to start with initial week-long monitoring of the Bartlett and Fisher wells. That's the beginning process. So Cushing is going to come out and start that process next week. And the other thing, you'll have licenses. If you haven't registered your dog, please do so, because licenses expire at the first, so.
That's important. Thank you.
It is. Register your dog.
Anything else? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the Dover Freeland Library. I see that Sue is here tonight. Consider the, consider the appointment of Richard. I'm not sure how to say it. Is it Pan or Pay? You know, Sue? Okay.
Pan.
Pan. And there was a letter with, that went to everybody with Richard's requests to be appointed, and the library is excited to appoint him.
Yes.
Yeah.
Who got the jam and traded it her pickles, yes. At town meeting.
We need to make a motion.
Any, yes.
I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Richard Pan for library trustee.
Second.
And this is for a what's, something remaining on this term or
it was the term that didn't, that we didn't
So it will be until the next town meeting.
Okay. I don't recall whose, whose term he was filling.
Well, there, there was an open seat that nobody ran for, so, but the, the way it goes is he's
Okay, I got you.
Until the next town meeting, so until next March, at which point he could go on the ballot.
Yes.
He was probably getting
Yes.
Great. So, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to most of the meeting, which is economic development. First is the signage standard possible adoption, and that's why it's in Dullin this year.
Thanks. Glad to be back. I just put up my screen here, do you mind? So last time we spoke, everybody was in agreement on the plan that our menu put together, but requested another green, a darker shade to help contrast against the lighter one that's currently. That's your screen. So I put together three different options for you guys. I went around town and found some different options that I thought, you know, might work well. There's one that's, they kind of go from lightest to darkest in terms of greens. So the first one is taken from Southern Deerfield Valley logo, the summer logo. So that's, you know, during the summertime, up on the pole banners, there's, you know, this greenish version of that logo, so I took the darkest green from that. And so that's option one. Option two, I'm going to refer to as Mount Snow Green. You know, I know Joe had mentioned last time, you know, incorporating our, our biggest business in, but I thought this was kind of a subtle way to bring something recognizable from that business, but not, you know, so in your face. So that's like the green that's, you know, out on Route 100 for the, the big entrance signs. And then the last one is the darkest of the options, and that is taken from the current library sign. So that one was updated a few years ago, and so I took the green from the background of that sign and put it together. Obviously, there is a million greens out there. So if none of these work for what you are all envisioning, we can certainly continue searching, but I didn't want to give you a million options, so I tried to narrow it down to like in the dark green category, a light, a mid, and a really dark one.
You got, did, did you have anything that you thought was personally the best?
Personally, I like
They're very different. I mean, particularly the lightest to the darkest.
Definitely, and I like the middle ground, I think, the most. I think it contrasts well with that lighter green. You know, I think the lightest one is
And then I, I printed the whole thing out. The lightest one is really green. The other ones aren't as green. I mean, that is very, very green.
Right.
And this is the middle green.
That one looks almost gray.
And this one almost looks black. I mean, it's got a real, like, kind of gray.
I mean, I, I
I mean, that would
Not working.
I like the green.
I like the green that's at the Dover Library sign.
You like that green, so that'd be this option.
But when, and it looks like, it looks black in the printout.
That's probably better than
Right, and when you see it
Driving by.
When you drive by, it looks like a really, like a nice forest green.
Yep. I like that one as well. I don't really think there was a bad option. I do think the darker two are a little bit better. I think the, the first one looks good when it's, like, on the white background, but when it's the full green, you know, if we're going to go that route on any signs, I think it's a bit much, or a bit bright.
Honestly, even in the discussions we've had, we don't envision too many signs where we're going with the whole green on the background.
But for lettering?
Yes, like, like the text itself.
Right.
I, I just, I, I can hardly discern the black on this printout from the green on the darkest version. It looks, it's lighter, it's a little grayer. This one definitely has more of a different
Green.
Yeah. Which would be the Mount Snow Green, I think, the middle one?
Yeah, it's the middle one, that is.
That's, and that's a good point. If we're going to do, if we're going to do signs that are mostly white with the, with the dark lettering, I think, I think you're right. I, I like that.
The middle one? You guys like it?
Not snow white.
Okay. Scott has no opinion.
Oh, he's shade blind, he said.
No, this one's The middle one.
None, nothing.
Right. This one.
Yeah, let me bring my computer to answer them.
Yeah. Well.
That's that one.
It's just
This would be the darkest.
Nothing. I mean, that is Okay, so it sounds like everybody here is in, in this, we'll do it in the CMYK, because that house, how it comes out.
Right.
Which is 71CM48Y62K31. Which is the middle one.
I read it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think what our hope would be is that ultimately, you guys would be voting on version two
Version two.
Of the guidelines, and that would include that color, along with everything else that we've presented, you know, in the past meetings.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the option two from the proposed Dover owned, Dover Town owned sign guidelines.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And Scott had no opinion on it, so I guess he abstained. Just say yes, yes. Okay. Moving on to the Route 100, Fourth of July closure approval letter, and we have Michael Lebec here from the Sawmill. Hi, Michael.
Hi there, how are you?
Hi, Mike.
Thank you for coming to answer any questions we may have. So Eric
For having me, and thank you for everything you all do. I appreciate it.
So Eileen had shared the application with me that they are using for the state for the, for the shutdown. I've shared that with you twice now. It marks where the route will go, which is, you know, down crosstown from, across the valley trail, through the Dots parking lot and up the northbound lane, or southbound lane, rather, Route 100, and back down the same route. She did mark, I believe, on that map where those, it's, it's a little hard to tell from the pink dots, but the, the pink dot on the map represents where the Mike, am I correct in that the pink dots on this map represent where people will be controlling traffic?
I, I can't see what you're looking at, but if you allow me to, to share my screen, I could show you the, I could show you the route on Strava.
We can try.
I don't know if I can. So yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. You make a right out of Farm Road Estate, so the start and finish starts in the, in the parking lot of Farm Road Estate. You make a right on crosstown, then every, then the, all the athletes will hop onto the valley trail. They're going to follow the valley trail up to, up to Country Club Road, make a right on Country Club, Country Club Road, then make a left on Route 100 right there. Route 100 South, it's going to be, it's not a, it's not a full closure, it's only a, it's only the shoulder that we'll be using. So, you know, we'll have to get some, some cones to delineate the, the path, just so you can have athletes going and athletes coming back. So you have a two-way direction, but you know what I mean? Part of the, part of the instructions during the, the, the pre-race briefing is, you know, we're not going to allow athletes to go side by side, they have to be more single file, just to, just so the footprint is less, you know? And obviously, so it doesn't create a danger for any, anybody running either direction. It proceeds up to the firehouse, turns around in the firehouse parking lot, and then proceeds down the exact same route back. We will have hydration stands, probably either one or two hydration stands for the athletes during the race. We haven't spoken specifically about the locations of that, but they'll be, you know, probably around mile marker one and mile marker two, so they can get them in two different directions.
Mike, you're able to share your screen now.
Alright, let's see if I can make this work.
He just didn't like it. They didn't give us that option.
He didn't give us an option for ten, so.
See what I can do here. Alright, I got it. Can everybody see that? Alright, so if we go to the beginning, if we go to the, the start. So here, this is Farm Road Estate right here. Can you see my cursor, my little hand? There, so you, you come out of our parking lot, make a right on crosstown, and then immediately hop onto the valley trail, right there, which is, you got about 100 feet of sidewalk, which athletes will run on, and then it just turns right into the valley trail, approximately in front of the, the Saloon Shopping Center right here. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the shopping center, but this shopping center right here. They're going to proceed down the valley trail, go over that nice new bridge that, that you guys just built, go past tennis courts, and then we get to Country Club Road. Originally, we had it going through the Dots, the Dots parking lot, but after speaking to, to Rich Werner, he had made a good point where there's going to be a lot of track, of traffic of people getting mail and such, or, and it also may disrupt business going to, go into Betsy's. So we didn't want to have any impact on either one of those, on either not the, the, you know, the, the, the post office, and we didn't want to have an impact on the, on Dots negatively, because this will happen during breakfast time on a Saturday. So I think that their parking lot, so we just rerouted it just before to Country Club Road, make a left onto Route 100, which we're going to be hugging the shoulder the whole way, and then, and right up here at the firehouse is where we turn around, and the course just reverses down the exact same path that it was before. Barely easy course, 71 feet of elevation gain, a 5K is 3.1 miles to the T, as you could see here. It's a, I mean, respectively, you know, an easy course. It'll be, it'll be a fun day, and as you know, this, we're doing this, I've been a member of the Rotary now for coming on four years, and, and this is going to solely, you know, similar to what we do with the, the Snow Fest during the, the winter, which is the, you know, the, the skate-a-thon that we do, and similar to what the Rotary does at Mount Snow, the Tube-A-Thon. It's going to be the same style event where all proceeds will go in benefit of the, the Rotary Club, you know, which obviously they, you know, there's, they do, we do a lot of good for the town and the Deerfield Valley. So it's, uh, this was, you know, an idea since we had, we have all of the, you know, the elements there, because that is our, our, you know, it's our, it's our music festival weekend. So we have the speakers set up, we'll have use of the tent, we'll have the staff there. It just, you know, it's a lot that makes sense, you know, to be able to incorporate something like this, and then since the Rotary had to cancel the, the, the barn tour this year, this was a, this was a good, you know, another good possibility of, of things to do to, you know, number one, good for the community, number two, and also to raise funds for the local community. You know, it's, we're excited about it, and I think it'll be, it'll be a fun day.
Okay. Do you have anything else to share on your screen, or should, because we can't see everybody in attendance now, if they have our questions?
Uh, let me turn that off.
Thank you.
Let me get out of this.
And I know Eric has a question anyway.
Yeah.
So I know one of the questions that came up last time is the length of time that this would be happening on the Route 100 portion.
So on the Route 100 portion, look, you know, if you wa, if you walk it, which, you know, we'll have two classes of runners. We're going to have the people who are running it and the people who are walking it, okay? At a brisk pace, a 22-minute mile is roughly, you know, the, I would say, the, the, a, 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 a nice walk, okay? So at 3.1 miles, at the race, we plan on starting the race at 8 o'clock sharp. You know, that would put us in just over an hour. So the actual time on Route 100, since that's between mile, it's like mile, between mile one and two, and between mile one and two roughly, I would say you're probably 45 minutes of Route 100 exposure in total. So in, in, in theory, the whole race will last 10, I mean, 8 to 10 o'clock at the absolute latest. You know, I, I would, I would anticipate everybody being back on the property by, by 9:15, 9:30 latest. But, you know, anybody who, you know, we're not, obviously, this isn't, we're not, um, this is not, we're not excluding anybody of any physical, any, who has any physical problems or anything like that. So if there's slower runners, we're going to account for that. That's why, you know, we, we rate, we allow the race to go to 10 o'clock. But I don't, I Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just asking if, if there are other questions from the board, audience, or the public who are on Zoom. Mike, you good?
Well, yeah, I have questions.
Okay, I figured.
First of all, what was submitted to the state had using the entire valley trail, not coming on the 100 at crosstown. That needs to be addressed with state in terms of using Route 100 for a longer stretch than what the map originally showed, from my understanding.
I, I think that that might be something that needs to be adjusted.
Okay. Okay.
You don't want to do anything that isn't within, you know, and if there's an accident, that could be a big liability.
So the, the reasoning for, for changing that was just because Rich had suggested not going through the, not continuing down the path to the end, there to the end of the valley trail, just because of the exposure at Dots and the, the post office. Is it Yeah, I mean, I would have to speak to the, I don't have the contact information for the new owner of Dots, you know, or the, who I would speak to at the post office to, to do this. I mean, I prefer, obviously prefer not to have to go back to the state, as that was a little bit laborious to get to, to deal with the state to adjust this.
Yes, Sarah. I don't, I don't, it's not so much we're suggesting you, you can't do it the way you're doing it, but if you're changing it and the state hasn't approved it with that additional, you know
Yeah. I didn't, I'm
We could create, or at least have some, reach out to the state to find out how precise, because you're now asking for a longer stretch on 100, and, and God forbid, somebody, someone, well, somebody's running right across that driveway where Mountain Park is, and they're not looking, and they, they or 7-Eleven, and they hit a runner.
Have you talked to 7-Eleven about this?
I haven't, because I know they just changed ownership as well. Just, just so the, the state highway access and permit allows for the location is Westover Route 100, start, finish at the corner of Crosstown Road and turn around at Firehouse.
Okay.
So, so would, would that technically allow the entire stretch of Route 100 right there, even though we're not utilizing 80% of it?
That would be a question for the state. Well, I'm, I'm reading the permit, and he is correct. That's what it says. It doesn't say any reference to, did you attach drawings, Michael?
Eileen had presented that one, so I, I wasn't, I wasn't on that email, but I can check with her.
Mike?
Yeah, so my understanding, yeah, the permitting reads that. My understanding, even maps that were sent to us were also sent to the state, which has it only Mountain Park Plaza to Firehouse, yeah. The other question I have, or concern I have is there's an email from Eileen Winters to the state talking about private officers and where they'll be, but it ignores the fact that we're also going to need people at both entrances to the saloon. Now, with changing it, if that's what we're doing, we're going to need people at Mountain Park Plaza, we're going to need them at both entrances to 7-Eleven, and there's probably a couple more that are not built on the Deerfield, any, well, Blue Brook's already covered, so that should be good, but there might be a couple other places that we're not thinking of. So there's a lot of places that are going to need traffic, just like we do with the parade. You know, just that major intersections is great, but those ins and outs of private businesses, we're going to need somebody there. You know, slowing people down, directing people stop, we got 20 runners coming through right now. We got a lot, you know, people walking to the baby car, we're going to need someone there. We can't, they're going to need somebody there. They're the ones with the permit, they're the ones carrying insurance. Something happens there, and they don't have somebody that's a, you know, certified traffic control person that's going to be on that. So I think there's a bit more that, I don't know if he's already talked to Rich about fire guys coming out, because anybody from police and fire can be at any of these places, no problem. But it's more manpower than I have, like, so probably look.
So I had spoken, I had spoken to Rich, and I have his support on this. I do need to attend one of his meetings to go over specifics. So Chief, I'd be happy to bring up those additional locations that you just brought up, just to, you know, ensure that we have the additional coverage at those with the, you know, so that would be the saloon parking lot entrances, 7-Eleven parking lot entrances. What was the other one you said?
Mountain Park Plaza where Betsy's is.
Where they come out of Mountain Park.
Well, they're not going to be anymore, because they're going to be
Right, that's right. Those cars, and that is mail time.
Yeah.
And American Flyer.
Yeah.
That won't be as, on the world that we saw in the if they cross. Because we're going to not cross down on the north
Oh, right, right, that's before that. Right, gotcha, sorry.
So I think that the, the ma, the workforce we're going to need to do this is bigger than what we had projected, and so we need to be assured that that will be, that those saf, safeties were, are in place. We can't really, and I'm not confident that we have that at this point.
Can we can we make an approval
Subject to
Subject to, you know, confirmation of, of coverage for all of those areas?
And state approval.
And
And concern that, that, yeah.
Conditional.
Sarah?
Mike, is there, is there a legal requirement that it be someone like fire, police, rescue, who's doing traffic control, or can there be volunteers?
There can they, they need to be certified flaggers. We used to hire a company that did it for the Blueberry Festival for us. That doesn't exist anymore. It was something the state put on, but they got rid of that during COVID, so that thing doesn't exist anymore. So, you know, on
What's the, what, is there like an online
Excuse me, hold on, hold on, Mike, Mike is speaking.
I apologize.
Always had, Rich may know better. We've always had, you know, certified flaggers have all of those places, certainly at all the major intersections where a road meets a road, but I believe we want them to have this as well.
So
Sarah?
Just, so what I'm, so we can't have volunteers trained and put them in those positions. It would have to be fire, res
Really, if they're not certified flaggers, they have no authority, really, to stop driving.
Okay. Jeanette?
Some of the highway guys are certified flaggers.
Okay, so Jeanette just said some of the highway guys have certified flaggers, but if we have them doing this, it's a three-hour call out. Time and a half.
That's why I think, if, if Mike, Rich, and I talk about what manpower is needed and available, we might be there, but I don't know that.
Okay, Michelle.
But, question, question.
Hold on, I, I have to recognize you. We have another hand up. Michelle?
Hi, sorry about that. Trying to get unmuted. So I just had a question, a comment that Michael made about the route and running on the side of the road or the shoulder. Is any part of 100 going to be sectioned off, or are you hoping that all the runners stay on the shoulder?
Mike, on, please.
We were going to put cones on the side.
Okay. Again, are you expecting everybody to stay off of 100? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just, I, I've run a, a fair amount of 5Ks in my, my running history, and it starts off big at the beginning and does thin out, so hoping, but typically, my experience when you're running on a road is you're, you're, you're coning off half a lane, which is a long duration on 100. But as long as it's being considered, and if safety is already covered, I guess that's good.
In my, in my
My concern.
Yes, Mike?
In my, my experience, I've done, I've done countless amounts of half marathons, Ironmans, 5Ks, 10Ks, this type of, this type of thing where you just, you, you cone off just the, the, the shoulder is done, is quite, is on open roads, is done quite frequently. So this, in my experience, you know, this, this is why, you know, look, in a perfect world, I would love to shut down Route 100. Unfortunately, the, the state, the state, the state would not allow that.
Thank you. So if we gave conditional approval, assuming we have the manpower for safety, and the state is okay with the application as submitted or will be amended, what is everybody thinking? Is Scott giving the yes?
I agree. Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm really, you know, I personally thought we should just do that around the airport and then run downhill, but that's not really good.
Scott? I just want to say, in general, I appreciate bringing all these events and having these things go on about the Snow Fest, and doing this to, to support the Rotary. I appreciate all those, so. Not like we're trying to shut things down, just trying to look out for your best interest and see, so definitely appreciate. So, somebody want to make a motion to that effect? Yes.
I think Joe is up there somewhere. I don't know if the. But.
Are, are you?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi, Jase.
It's me. Yes.
Do you have something to say?
I have nothing to say to this.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the Route one hundred partial closure, subject to confirmation that the application to the state for said appro- said closure remains approved with the, with the map change. And that sufficient uh fl- certified flaggers are available to maintain control of the race route.
Second. Any other comments? Nice job. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. All right, moving on to the next item. Let's see. Uh, I'm buried, okay. Uh, Chamber of Commerce event sponsorships, as in multiple. Which one, Bethany? I know you're here. Hi. Uh, which one do you want to tag first?
Uh, let's start with the fireworks, because that's um, it's the same as last year. It's pretty straightforward.
So, asking for six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, which is the same as last year.
Correct.
Or, or what, and the fireworks this year are on the fifth, eight, the sixth. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or thoughts about the fireworks in Wilmington? Right? So, does somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the funding request for six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for the Independence Day celebration fireworks to put, display.
Second. Anything else? All in favor? Aye. Now, which one?
Let's go. Yes, yeah, let's do that.
Blueberry, the chamber is looking for seventeen thousand dollars for the Dover Parade, Street Fair and Music Mile. Um, and the date of this event is Friday, Jul- on Friday through, well, with the street fair will be on Saturday, the twenty seventh.
Yes.
July. And is this funding level or more than you asked for last year?
So this is an increase um of about two thousand dollars from last year, uh, bringing back the parade. I think some of you were there. It was, I think it was a great hit. Um, we're certainly making some adjustments to have the whole day run more smoothly. Um, but part of bringing the parade back, it has some additional costs. Um, one of them is having uh Dover PD help, help support the traffic control. Um, Randy had given me some numbers last year, so I incorporated them into this year's budget um, with a little bit of a boost, assuming there's some changes in payroll and stuff like that. So I've put in twenty five hundred dollars for that. Um, and that's really what bumped us up. Otherwise, it's just making sure we've got enough bands for the Music Mile and the parade, um, and really making sure there's some great performers spread throughout the tree, the street fair to keep people um there all afternoon.
And is the economic development department in favor of this?
Absolutely. So, really positive feedback, we're bringing the parade back in the first place. Um, and the more we can do to expand on this event, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see it as a staple event into where the way it used to be, and I think we're, we're that happening with the money, then yes, we are absolutely, I am absolutely in support. Shannon is abstaining because she's on.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody? Hearing none?
I make a motion that we approve the grant request of seventeen thousand dollars uh for the Vermont Library Festival for the Dover Parade, Street Fair and Music Mile.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And lastly, we have the Wine and Harvest Festival. Um, which the chamber's asking for fifteen thousand dollars. And this will take place on the twenty first, which is the Saturday of September, which is Saturday at Mount Snow, as it always has.
Not always.
And this.
Right.
And um, so there is an increase in this one of about five thousand dollars. Um, last year we saw significant growth in attendance in this event. It went from sixteen hundred to twenty three hundred attendees, which was um phenomenal, but we ran through any back um stock we had of everything. Um, so we need to reorder all new supplies, assuming twenty five hundred attendees this year. Um, we also have to scale up a little bit to support the larger number of um people there um on Saturday, so all good reasons, but um that is why there's an increase.
And totally, the businesses were extremely happy with the amount of people who were in town after the event and were, you know, dining and having beverages and things like that. So I mean, it's, it's a big event and it brings a lot of people to Dover. Um, you know, over the weekend, so I think it's, this is absolutely something we should continue to support.
Comments?
Well, I just, I just wondered, what, what was it? Was there was bad weather like the year before? It's just they promoted it more? What was the?
Uh, well, not to speak for Bethany, but for all events in general, coming out of COVID, it, it, there's a ramp up, right? I mean, everybody, you know, that first year out of COVID, it's, it was a, a little time ago. A lot of people didn't want to travel. A lot of people didn't want to be in spaces for a lot of people, and I think, yeah, so I think coming into next year, last year, a lot more people were moving around and excited about these types of festive events.
There was some pent up desire to get out.
Yeah, we also ironically, we had bad weather last year compared to the year before. Um, last year was cloudy and um, we ended up getting rained on in the later afternoon, but um people still showed up. We also did e- expand our marketing efforts and, and marketed earlier last year, which will do this year as well. Um, and I think that also helped in addition to what Eric shared.
Yes, I, oh, I'm sorry. Um, and um, uh, the street fair was beyond packed. Which was the night before, which was a beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
Well, what?
Right.
Yes, yes, it was packed. The line to the chamber was insane.
Yes, yeah, and we're working, so we had six hundred and twenty five people, which is like a hundred and twenty five more than we had the year before. Um, so we are tweaking things in anticipation of similar numbers this year to make sure the line is smooth and we have enough soup and wine and um spacing things out a little bit, so there's uh ease of strolling, but yeah, it was phenomenal. It was to see so many people turn out.
Well, congratulations for that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we approve a grant request of fifteen thousand dollars for the Vermont Wine and Harvest Festival. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Bethany.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Uh, next, we're going to talk about the STR registration recommendation.
Great, long time coming on this one. Um, through our due diligence, working with those third party registration organizations and making sure that we make a recommendation to you guys that best fits our needs and, and will create as little work as possible for our already somewhat taxed staff, so uh, we, we feel like we've, we've done that due diligence. Um, the recommendation that we're making to you all is that we look to move forward with this organization, Decker Technologies. Uh, and I'll, I'll introduce Dave Brown and Dustin, who are here on the call. Um, who you can ask questions to in just a minute. Uh, what I wanted to do is just to go over, what I provided you was a breakdown of what would be included in the ordinance. This is in no way the actual ordinance. It's just the things that we're talking about having put in there, just to kind of ease our property owners' minds about what it is that we're doing and the fact that it sticks to those recommendations that were originally made out of that S T R or the rental subsidy, okay? So I'll just go through those quickly. Requirement one would just be that all properties within the town of both of Dover, both east and west, register their property as a short term rental with Decker Technologies. Um, and that's any property that's rented for more than fourteen days and enrolled in a twelve month period and rent, rented less than thirty consecutive days per guest. I know there was a lot of question about what constitutes a short term rental. For the ordinance, this is what would constitute a short term rental. Okay? Um, each short term rental property as described above would be subject to the state Vermont Department of Fire safety requirements for short term rentals as follows. Uh, any property sleeping less or eight or less occupants would be required to fill out a self certification that's provided by. And I think I gave that to you guys as well. If I didn't, I can send you the link, but basically it is a self certification that all fire safety things have been taken care of, all health concerns have been taken care of, and that all tax accommodations have been taken care of, which is more between them and the state, but uh that form makes them self certified. As part of the registration, that form would be uploaded to their customer, to their registration file, so that all of that is on file, that, that it's been done. Any of those properties sleeping more than eight, so nine to sixteen, uh is subject to inspection by the state Vermont, uh, the state of Vermont Department of Fire Safety. Uh, and we, we were thinking in the first year of allowing um, allowing registrants to enter that date that they have scheduled for their inspection and then giving them thirty days, basically giving them a conditional approval for that rental, so we're not trying to shut anybody down. We know that there's a backlog at the state level for those inspections. So what we would be requiring from those larger properties is if you haven't already had your inspection done, that you put in the date of when you've registered for your inspection and then thirty, you have thirty days to make those adjustments, which is what state fire gives you after that, uh in order to be fully approved. Okay, um, and then also it says, you know, basically anything that comes out from the state fire safety wise would also be adhered to above and beyond what this ordinance states. Okay? Uh, requirement three is that an emergency contact list be posted in the, the entrance or in prominent location inside each unit. That would be self certified as part of the registration. Um, you know, they would just say, yes, I've done this. Uh, a point of contact for the owners for the short term rental properties must be on file, again, part of the registration. Requirement five, a point of contact or authorized representative must be able to respond to issues on the rental property within one hour twenty four seven while the rental is in use. As we stated before, this doesn't mean that person needs to be on property. It just needs to, they need to be reachable within that time. So as part of the registration, there would be supplying a name and contact for who that person is, if they have a property manager, if it's them themselves. Uh, but that would be part of the registration to give us that information. Um, and then requirement six, uh, the bear proof trash, and that's going to be a photo certification as part of the registration. You upload a photo, this is my bear proof trash. And then requirement seven was just kind of piggybacks on uh, the registration itself would be that properties who, who accumulate, and it says X number of confirmed complaints, uh documented infractions, complaints, or who refuse to uh get their license from the town of Dover, face possible fines and or revocation of their permit to use their property as a, as their short term rental for a determined period of time. So we're not trying to shut anybody down, we're just, there needs to be some kind of teeth behind uh, what we're putting out here so that, you know, we, people actually register and do the things we're supposed to do. We said it from the beginning and I'll say it again, just in case there's anybody new here, we did this because we we understand the importance of these types of log, like lodging accommodations, and we just want to make sure that it's not affecting the people who aren't renting. Um, and it's, it's really all about safety and accountability, so anybody who disagrees with the things we're talking about doing is, is either trying to not be safe or not be accountable for their property, and that's not really what we're looking for in the town of Dover. So I think all of these requirements, obviously, you, you'll see the actual ordinance. I didn't want to pay for legal until we decided which direction we were going to go. But um, you know, all of these requirements will be included in that ordinance, and we're not going above and beyond that unless you find the need to, but, but based on the information we found in the other municipalities we've spoken to, we feel that this is an adequate uh, amount of, of oversight uh to make sure that those problems are.
Sarah.
Um, are you, at this point, are we making suggestions for things we'd like to see here, or we're just going to keep it general for now? Um, cause I have two suggestions.
You can throw them out there. Just, I, I've been trying to have this, sorry, I'm just.
Yes, you did.
Uh, I've been trying to have this conversation as public and transparent as possible, so I don't want it, I don't want anyone to feel that we're doing anything uh by the, you know, under the darkness, so.
Well, I, I, I mean, one of my suggestions was, since we're asking for um the proof of the, the bear proof with a photograph, can we also get a photograph of the, the listing inside the unit?
Okay. The, the emergency contact list?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and just to, to clarify, um, there was something about listing the owner, it would actually be a person's name, not just the LLC. Cause a lot of these are LLCs now. Um, and then the other thing, which isn't really in any of these specifically, the biggest complaint we seem to be getting from the people who live near the STRs is the lack of, of appropriate parking. And that there, that the parking frequently encroaches on their ability to access their road and even their own driveways. And so is there some, and I guess I'm asking, are the people from Decker too, is there some way of certifying the number of available parking spaces with a listing? And limiting, and so that we know that people were, what we, if we're trying to make this so that the people around these places are feeling you know, like they're able to enjoy their homes, the biggest complaint we've really gotten is parking.
Okay. So I mean, there's, there's definitely, I think, an opportunity to make it a part of the registration to say the prop, you know, the prop, like the property sleeps this many people and for those spaces, there are this many parking spaces, right? I mean, we, we do get into a very area of trying to decide, you know, like, are they bringing a van full of eight people, or are they, you know, are they bringing eight separate cars? So I think.
Right. Um, I care, I, I, I.
No, no, go ahead.
Um, I care less about how, about how the people decide to get there, than if we say you can park four vehicles here, that's all you can bring up.
Right.
And how, you can put twenty people in car if you want to. But that the, that the parking spaces be listed as part of the registration and that the number of cars does not exceed that.
Yeah, and I think that that is partially covered under requirement seven, which is just those, those documents and proven infractions, so parking is a constant problem. Obviously, at a property, you could have it be an issue one time, right? And it's, you know, we get that call, it's like, hey, this is a problem. Um, with the, with this process and having them registered and reaching out to them with those, you know, hey, there's a complaint that's been filed. The hope is that then they would remedy that situation so that that doesn't hap- I mean, they're the ones who want to keep renting their property, right? So it doesn't behoove them to allow people to continuously overpark and block roads. Um, so the hope is that by having those teeth of, like, the possibility of fines or losing your rental, that that would help the police itself.
Yes. Well, I think we're gonna, a lot of, some answers are gonna come up from these guys.
And the infractions and complaints, do they happen? So it could be parking even if we don't have it in, in the um ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the thing with the, the, the complaints and the way that we'll have it set up, it's, it's not Jim hates his neighbor Bob, so he can call three times and file a complaint and say this is bad and, and they get shut down. It's documented complaint, right? So if there is a parking problem, almost everybody has a cell phone they can get a picture of, like, if it is excessive noise, most like, if it's that loud, chances are you can get a video of it, you know, so there's there's way to document these complaints as they come in, so that it's, you know that it's a verified complaint and not something um, that
No, that would.
That is an issue. Um, and then I, we'll turn to these guys in a moment, who I think can explain um, with, with the package they've put together for us and the kind of the twenty four seven complaint hotline. Um, they, they ought our certain, like, our piece of the package there, so that they actually have someone who can reach out to that point of contact who's managing the property and say, hey, this is an issue, can you please do something?
Which is a really important part.
It's incredibly important.
Yeah.
So, again, uh, Dave, Dustin, uh, from Deckard, do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Sure, Dustin Rylik of uh, of Deckard Technologies. Thank you so much for having this uh issue tonight. Uh, and I know we're joined by Dave as well, but I'll take the lead with uh uh, answering any questions. Uh, we work with over three hundred and fifty jurisdictions nationwide, and Eric has been great to work with in uh making sure that all of the nuances and all of the questions uh that could possibly come up there locally can be addressed ahead of time uh for, for making sure that everyone is happy. We want to have a harmonious uh, you know, uh, community and uh the interaction between short term rentals and the community is important for tourism as well as uh, you know, having uh good neighbor pro- uh, uh policies. Um, so we do have the ability during our identification and monitoring of our properties, which is the first thing that we do in finding all of these short term rentals uh in your community, then we will go ahead and do an outreach campaign where we actually send a letter uh to each of these owners saying we need you to register your local property. We need to make sure that you uh answer all of these questions about, you know, the bear box and being able to upload a picture of the bear box and make sure that they have they ta- they attest to the fact that they have off street parking that is available, even if a photo is required of. Even if a photo is required of that off street uh uh parking, we can have that uploaded as well. All of these things can be done during the process. Uh and then we do that registration process very thoroughly, but it's very easy and easy to have that interaction between. The constituent uh who owns the property and the actual uh platform, which is very simple for them to be able to upload things into. And then we provide the customer support on the uh uh an online form for complaints where someone could actually. Make a noise complaint, a trash complaint, uh a parking complaint. All of these different things will all be in the system and housed as a complaint form. In addition to running a twenty four seven hotline uh that's always available to your constituents. Even if there's some crazy party that breaks up, breaks out at one thirty in the morning, we want to make sure it is handled. At the time of the uh the the instance. So uh we get very involved in that and we have a. Call center that is standing by with over a hundred operators to serve your community on a, on a nationwide basis. And Dave is local to you. He's actually out of our, our representative that's out of the Boston area. Uh not super local, but he's local to you. Uh I'm, I'm actually from our headquarters in San Diego. Short, short drive.
Okay. So I think at this point, uh we can open up to questions. So I have Tabby with her hand up.
Hi, just touching base briefly on the ordinance structure, um. We do have parking requirements for dwellings in the town of Dover that is in the bylaw. We do. Uh want to make sure that. The residences have adequate parking and there are parking numbers and sizing and spacing for that. Um I want to make sure that it is. Very well stated that there is no on-street parking in the town of Dover. So never mind discussing about off. Side, um off-street parking, but making sure that that's understood. Um the other thing is as we are looking at specifying trash requirements. Um we need to make sure that we add a note in there that the trash needs to be picked up in a timely fashion. Whether it's weekly, I mean, I see people who have gotten the big trash dumpsters. That are bear proof and they are stuffed through to overflowing because they're only picked up once a month. So it's not just having the trash. Contained, but also picked up in a timely fashion. I think we can probably handle everything else. Through the structure, but if we're gonna be building out an ordinance, those two things are uh hot buttons that I see quite often.
Yes, Eric.
So one of the benefits that that I found in speaking with our friends at Deckard was the ability through the registration process to provide. Education about a lot of these things, so letting them know like. Not necessarily, you know, demanding that the trash be picked up, but like, hey, the trash should be picked up this, you know. Pointing them to things like there's a program called Noise Aware, which allows the, the property owner to. Kind of track the decibel level in the property and outside. Uh and then uh Dustin had actually pointed me to a another program and I forget the name right off the top of my head, but.
Party squatters.
Party squasher. So basically, what it does, it's a program that provides the owner with. With access to their wifi router that tells them, hey, all of a sudden there's thirty different devices on your wifi router in your home and you only got. Two people staying there. Um so it, it helps them to know like maybe they, they've got no people there than they signed up for and things like that, so. The, the education process of this is, is absolutely as important as the registration process of it and through. Our contract with, through our contract with Deckard, they, they help us to do those things. They're willing to spend time. With any property owner who wants to come and learn about the ways that they can be responsible for their property, they're happy to help us provide that education.
All right, Morgan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um yeah, Eric, I just wanna say thank you first and foremost for uh putting all that information together. Um just a quick question. When it comes to HOAs and condos, let like, let's say seasons, for example. Um. I mean, are they gonna be held to the same sort of requirements? For example, like. They don't, you know, they have their own trash there. All of the fire alarms are connected to like a central. Network. So if you have an issue at your house, they're all gonna go off. So. Where is the line drawn with like places like that? And is there any difference?
Uh you know, absolutely. I, I understand what you're saying. You know, just, but just because there's fire systems installed at season doesn't mean that they've been. Recently inspected. I mean, there's, there's still the requirement. I mean, these are state requirements, right? These are not things. That we came up with for short term rentals. These are.
Right.
These are undocumented, like pertaining to, to rentals. So. Realistically, this is even without ordinance, even without a registration in Dover. These are things that should have been ta- you know, should have been taken into account. Prior to. Uh that property being used as a short term rent. Right? We, we only added that section of the already required fire stuff to make sure, I mean, the self certification. It's not something that everybody's aware of and it's not some, even if they are, it's not something that everybody's actually completing, even though it is a requirement of the state. Because if they're not tasked with giving that document to anyone right now, this would require. To say, yeah, I looked at this and filled it out and now it's attached to my rental. So it's, it's just another level of a, of a. Wall that's already there to, to make things safer. Um and as far as trash and things at seasons, if that's the system you're using, then it's very easy to upload a picture of.
So just take a photo of that. Okay, fair enough. Just wanted to know if there was any other differences.
As far as our ordinance would be concerned. It doesn't, it's, it's not the holy word in every HOA, okay? If, if bears crossing seasons or anybody else comes up with their own rules, they would be in addition to these rules that the town has.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh Garber, you had your hand up. Do you, oh, there you go. Okay, Mike?
Yep. So again, when dealing with the HOAs, the parking issue is different for, for some of the HOAs. I know my driveway can handle ten cars. Who's gonna determine, you know, what, what? What driveways can handle cars and on our roads, we do park cars. Uh up in Partridge Run. So I was just wondering how that would get handled.
I, I think the main part of it was to make sure that cars weren't on the road. So if cars are parking on your road and it's not an issue, then, then I, we're not. I myself or anybody else from the town, it's not the, you know, the parking police driving around to make sure that there isn't over parking, but. You know, it's, it's again, providing that education and if there is a complaint, at least those properties know through that registration process that, hey. Parking can be an issue and if you get a complaint for it, you've been warned that parking, you know, parking in the street and overparking is not okay.
Are you good with that, Mike?
Thank you.
Dan.
Besides noise and parking, which is the usual problem. The other big problem is when people put ashes on their deck and burn the buildings down for safety. I don't see, I obviously we're not privileged to the documentation, but that's really something that's very important.
I think that, again, that that's something that would be included in that education piece as they're going through the, you know, we, we put these things in the registration and have them certify. You know, these, these are the, you know, these are the things that I need to know around my property. So it's all part of that, that education piece and would be a requirement of that registration.
Yes, Scott.
Uh this is more a question. Do you guys happen to ever run like, uh I don't know, like. Webinars or something on like, hey, this is the basics on how to get registered. These are the, the, the super easy things that you could do to make sure that. Party crashers and all that, and that we could offer out to the town or people, not that people necessarily take advantage of that, but.
So that was literally the question I asked Dave, uh I believe it was last Friday after we kind of confirmed that we would be. You know, at least recommending to move forward with them is, hey, the education piece is really big here and I want, you know. I want property owners to learn how to run their property responsibly if they don't know now. And I want all of these property owners to know exactly how to register through this whole process so that nobody feels like. This is too daunting or something to take care of. And we've, we've really tried to cover all the bases on this.
Absolutely.
Mike, do you have a second question? Okay, um any other questions? Yes.
Who at this level is responsible for. Issuring fines and determining that somebody is in violation of this ordinance?
Mayor?
No, 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 it's not.
How do you, where do you envision that?
So um in terms of like registration, so they take care of um. The first three letters in escalation to the property owners to get them to register. Uh past that, per whatever is determined in the ordinance, we would send an additional letter saying you, you have not registered your property. You're in violation. You'll be accumulating a fine of X amount until your property is either removed as a listing. Or put down. So we'll have a form letter for that that would be sent out. And speaking with Shannon, she absolutely feels that she has the capacity to be dealing with that piece of it and, and sending. Um you know, the letters and, and all of those pieces. So in speaking with our friends at Deckard, I mean, we're talking about. You know, at least on the registrations side, a ninety four to ninety five percent compliance rate for registration. So it's really not. Uh as heavy a lift on the registration side. And then I think, um you know, when infractions occur. The, the idea that we have been thinking all along is, okay, first infraction is a verbal warning, second infraction is a written warning. And third infraction escalates that to the, the point where we say, please remove your listing or you face fines for having your property listed. Um so all of that, we, we had envisioned dealing with. In-house up here.
Right.
So. Currently we get calls about things like this and I think it's only gonna get worse if we have an ordinance that everyone's aware of. And we don't deal with it unless they're on, if there's cars on the road, it's on the moving across the road. We don't enforce currently. This, this building can handle twelve, you know, our cars. We, we, we don't care about that as the police. Are we gonna be expected to do more to enforce this or is our job gonna stay the same? In terms of. If we go and it's not a safety issue because there aren't cars on the roadway, but you got an ordinance about, we're gonna turn around, we, we, we're not, I mean. Are we gonna count how many cars and report it back to somebody at the state or the town rather, or police people? And then, you know, when we do get inevitably, we're gonna get those calls, I assume we'll just. Give them the information for. Deckard, this is where you file a civil complaint. Cause it's not a criminal matter.
And all that information should also be on the county website, obviously. And we're gonna try to make it as easy as possible. I'm sure you will.
Cause they're not gonna be happy with the fact that, you know, somebody's gonna deal with this on, on Monday.
No, twenty four seven.
Yeah, but what's, what's really gonna happen? That's my.
But they may get ahold of the owner.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I think that there's more avenues to at, at access, getting something done.
Mm-hmm.
Having, being able to contact somebody and being able to. Uh you know, to actually talk to somebody. So I think that, and some of the people just wanna talk to somebody too about it. So, hold on, we got too many questions. All right.
I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna have added responsibilities in terms of counting cars or having decibel meters in our cars, but we don't deal with that. You know, we have noise complaints and if it's not disturbing at least, then we move on. Or I, I just, we're not gonna have time to. And also police this ordinance, I don't believe.
I, I understand your concerns and I think that. I think this ordinance and hiring a company to help us with it is, will go a long way. And I mean, obviously, we've never done this before and, and so we, and I'm sure we could get references from many a ski town. Men, similar to us, listening, looking at who they work with, uh if we. That, and to me, it's just, I think we're going the right direction to try to, try to pull this all together. Uh hold on, Dan had his hand up.
Yeah, would the penalty fines be if they uh, we shall call it, didn't follow along? We could suspend them or terminate them from renting, being able to rent?
So we don't have the.
Yes.
So we, we don't have the ability to remove them from BRVO, Airbnb or any of the third party listings and neither does Deckard. However. What we do have the ability to do is to flag that property through Deckard, which would tell us, hey, this property who's not supposed to be listed per the removal of their registration. Is listed again, at which point we can begin to levy the fines. Again, hoping it never gets to that point with many of these properties, but it's just, there needs to be some kind of teeth. Otherwise, they're just gonna keep doing it.
Will. Will Galloway. Galloway.
Sorry, trying to find the unmute button here. Um I just wanna, I wanna thank Eric and the board for, for their work on this. I think it's great. Um the amount of effort that went into it and the thought that went into it. So that's first off. Second off, I think like just in terms of like police issues, if there is actually a noise violation and something that's really disruptive to the community. The police should take the normal action, the police normally take in those situations, whether it's a rental, uh a local or anybody, right? So um it's just my opinion as a STR owner and, and a, and a vacation homeowner up there. Um I think if it ever gets to that level, it should be handled as any other incident would. But if it's just a neighbor with a complaint, then the process should run its course as it's been mentioned here. So. Uh ju- just my two cents and, you know, I, I thank you guys for your work on this.
Thank you for your comment. Eric.
May I respond to Mike?
Yes.
So yeah, in our heads, we, this puts no more work on you guys than what you would legally do for any, you know, infraction at this point. What it does do is implement that complaint system. So if there is something that's a constant problem that doesn't get to a legal level. We're still notified of it and can do something. To try to bring that property in line. So no, we're not expecting you to count cars or decimal meters or any of those things. You would continue your course as you usually do. The rest of it would be handled through the complaint system hopefully by. Their twenty four seven hotline reaching out to that point of contact to try to remedy the situation. You know, from there or by giving them that infraction. Which could lead to them losing the, the right to, to list their property. Um the other piece that I just wanted to throw out there is that, you know, so there is obviously a cost to working with Deckard. Um you know, with the amount of properties that we have in town and the price that was quoted to us by Deckard. We're looking at somewhere in the hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifty dollar a year range to be registered as a short term rental. The average um one night stay in the town of Dover right now is three hundred and fifty dollars a night. So we're really not asking for the moon um to, to. Be registered and we feel that that's a safe amount of money to be charging to cover the expenses that we would incur from Deckard to have all of this running back.
Will, did you have a question or did you just not put your hand down? I think.
Didn't put my hand down, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Anything else from anybody? Jeanette?
So this is going to be actually a town ordinance, correct?
Well, we, we haven't fully voted on sending it to legal to have it written. Legally.
So I mean, we're gonna follow those protocols.
Yes, if it becomes an ordinance, yes. So Eric, you're asking us to. First, send it, authorize you to send this to legal to get it. Drawn up as a proper ordinance and second, to. Pursue, and what more do you need from Deckard here for most our, our relationship with them? Until we approve the ordinance.
Yeah.
Which takes a period, period of time.
No, I, I understand. Um. So. I, I don't know that we. It's a double edged sword, right? Because we don't wanna, we don't wanna sign up for a service that we've ultimately made, you know. Where the ordinance end up pushing out or having issues with, but at the same token, they have tools that could help us through that process to make, you know. Like inter recommendations in terms of fines and how all the structure of that works. So. Um I absolutely make the recommendation to move forward with Deckard. Uh it's, it's up to you guys when you want to do.
Sarah, sorry. So, um. Dustin, that, say we. Decided we wanted to move forward with you and we sent the ordinance to legal, they wrote it. We go through our ordinance process and then for what, for some reason it gets challenged, it's voted down, we aren't allowed to do it. Can we have a short term relationship with you up until that point where we could call on you for advice and counsel? Not necessarily for free, but. Where in, in aiding us in shaping the ordinance and presenting it. And if it turns out that it didn't work, we would, we would. Have to part ways because we wouldn't have anything for you to do. But we wanna.
We, we be more than.
Create a short term rental of your services.
Yeah, we uh, we would be more than happy to work with Eric in any capacity that you require.
That's very generous of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Richard.
Well, could you not, because supposedly there was a lot of short term rental people who thought this was a wonderful idea. Could not the town of Dover and Cambridge would agree with the bad ordinance and let short term. And let sh- short-term rental people participate for that cheap hundred and fifty dollars or whatever. Per come place and he can start seeing how it works while you work doing your ordinance. There may be, you may have so many people sign up and maybe you may not even need one. I'm not being facetious, but.
I I we we just, we have a burglar alarm ordinance now. You know, yeah. I mean, it's it it exists, it exists, it it's still in its, you know, so. I I think I I I would really need to consider that, I I haven't thought about that. I think that an ordinance is. Usually, I mean, uh, uh, we could have done that with some other ordinances we have and we could fall into problems, so.
No, I'm just saying, not start too and then also be working on it ahead of time. And some people may say, wow, this is a lot easier than I thought, they may give Eric some more information towards this ordinance that he's working on. And if they're willing to let people sign up voluntarily. Put it out there and see what people think.
We could probably do it, once it's approved by the select board, we could probably get some test cases going and. And see how how the process all goes, I think that that might help our timeline. Um, some feedback from some STR owners, some that are very active and interested. Uh, what do you think?
So there is a lead time for them, right? So it's it's about a month, maybe a little more to get things implemented and education and things like that, so I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not as concerned about getting the ordinance. Written, you know, approved at the select board level and then making decisions from there about how we want to proceed.
So you wanted it done in 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 place ideally, but by sometime in the early. Like end of summer or before fall.
Yeah, so I'd like, in 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 the best world, I mean, we can technically open it. The first year, I'd like to give an extended period of time for people to to. Register and then if they don't by a certain date, then they're in that, then they're in that infraction period, so. And obviously, years after that, we would set that registration period to be from this date to this date, barring somebody purchasing a property and making it a new registration. Uh, but my thought was because of the timeline provided to us by Deckard that we could, this is something we could. Have the ordinance taken care of, make it through that process and then have them start with the property identifications, I mean, we could have. A registration system up and running by, you know, a little later in the summer. Um, you know, allowing people to either take care of it before or or after, uh, fully.
That makes sense. Okay, you had your hand up?
Yeah, and then what, the ordinance would make it possible for you then to. Demand at a certain time that they do it and with the penalty.
Registration.
I'm saying, if if they were to hypothetically, you can go for each's idea and they were to register, are they saying that they agree with? Whatever ordinance or is it just, is that independent? Because like then if if it didn't. Matter about the ordinance and they weren't saying, yes, we agree with this, then, you know, whatever, you could go home and sign up just because it might be a helpful resource, so. Mind your home, but it would sink if like. They said, yes, oh, we didn't, we signed up for this, but we didn't say, okay, do it.
So the recommendations that we're making for the ordinance are what's going to be a part of the registration process, right? Like, we're not slipping anything at the end, so like, I I wouldn't be as worried about that. I guess my concern would be. If we allow her to open, people pay that registration money in, and then ultimately something happens where we don't. Have, then then we have to get money back and give that back to people, it's a, it's a muddy situation and.
Yeah.
I know, I I I know that it. There there are questions that we don't, you know, necessarily have answered right at the moment, but I feel like we've done the due diligence to. The point that we can with these guys and through our work to say, this is what we think we should be doing, so, yeah, there's.
And these guys know what they're doing, so they're gonna help us through it, so I think we need a motion, if everybody's of name. To send the STR ordinance requirements outlined to legal. At this point, we don't have to make a decision about the infraction number, that number can be inserted at any time. And also to move forward with Deckard with their proposal dated March twenty-eighth. Um, for the town of Dover.
Right, so I make a motion that we authorize the economic development department. To submit the suggested ordinance requirements to a legal department for. Um, codification into a formal ordinance. Simultaneously, that we retain Deckard technologies based on the proposal issued March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. With the understanding that, um. That that the ultimate, uh, legal relationship will be contingent upon approval of the ordinance at the town level.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for sitting through our meeting, that's a lot of heavy lifting you guys.
We look forward to working with you, thank you so much and thank you, Eric, for all that you're doing for your community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing us.
Yeah, thanks. So now we're gonna move on, we've still got a lot of stuff on the agenda. Um, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five economic development incentive pro- programs and there's, they've been. Modified slightly and, uh, updated for the current year, so which one do you wanna start with first, signage?
Uh, sure, so. Uh, signage was pretty much the same, uh, some of the wording has changed a little bit.
Day.
Dates have changed, uh, but other than that, about the same. Um, any questions on signage?
So let's. Yeah, let's do them separately. Anybody have any questions about the signage program? Literally, this is a couple of grammatical cor- corrections and a date change.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-four Dover commercial signage improvement program. Uh, with effective date of July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Joe, which one? DAS.
Same thing, change the date, uh, you can see there's a few grammatical things changed and red on the front page there, uh, but for the most part. Uh, the same, we've, we've actually been able to hone this one in pretty good the past few years based on. Uh, submissions that we felt didn't fit and we've made the most of those changes already, we feel like this one's running pretty good, so. Just a few grammatical changes in the dates and.
I make a motion that we approve the DA, uh, Dover Advertising Support Program Application Form twenty twenty-four, effective date, July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
So some more changes to do it, uh. Or remember Sarah Shippe supplied us with some recommendations to the program that she felt, or some changes that she felt. Uh, could be useful to the program, Shannon and I reviewed those changes and implemented the ones, all of the ones that we felt. Fit the, uh, the nature of the program and what we had in, how we envisioned the program, so. It wasn't every change that you suggested, but the majority of them, I think, uh, the majority of them are are made in this document, you can see the changes obviously in red. Um, then, yeah, that's, that's what I agree with.
Are you good with this version, Sarah?
Yeah, I just was looking, did we change not discriminating?
Answer the question. Where are we at with like, um, people coming around or, you know, so so many businesses have taken advantage of this, which is great. Um, are we still like, you know, first come, first served?
Nope, nope, that's out of here.
Yeah, that requirement's been, that was removed, uh, I believe two years ago. Basically, all businesses are eligible to apply, businesses applying the first time go to the top of the pile. Okay, businesses that are continuously pulling gas, trying to do it money rather. While they're still eligible to receive funding, uh, you know. They're con- they're considered further down the line of funding, uh, in terms of this program. We're just, we're trying to spread the money around as as much as possible.
And I see some of the changes I like here, um, it clearly spelled out, yeah.
I felt like there were some areas that were. Substitution interpretation.
Yes, okay.
I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Dover opportunity for investment in the town application form.
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
DTAP will come in front of you guys later this year.
Yes, okay, my, Joe, did you vote?
Yep, yes.
Thank you.
So, uh, the assistance program will come in front of you guys later this year, we just, we held off on that because some of, some changes were requested. Uh, from some residents in East Dover, so we we have a little more time to look at that and put those in front of you before that program opens, uh, in the late summer, early fall.
Okay, good, okay, now we have the Horace Hill Maintenance R and B.
So, I don't have an R and B for you to review or to to approve tonight, um. If you even wanna go that route, but basically, we've, we've been provided the recommended, uh, maintenance schedule from our trail builders on Horace Hill. Um, you know, what they're talking about does come in at a, you know, a a money level that would require us to at least get some. Some additional quotes and things, so what I'd like to do with your permission is to release a request for bid. Uh, based on the recommendations from that trail building company and have people provide us, anyone who's interested in bidding. Provide us with what they would charge us to do this amount of work on the property. Um, if if you're okay with it, I I've put out a few R and Bs and R and Bs at this point, I would like to just write it and get it out. If you'd like me to wait two weeks for you to review, we can do that as well.
I think write it and get it out, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, just email it to all of us when it's written.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's someone clearing the obvious problem, but I don't anticipate.
And so that, just because seniority would not, they're not actually up for doing this, right?
They they absolutely are, like, they absolutely intend to bid based on the structure that they've given us, but based on what that came back as, I would like. Per our spending policies to have it out to bid so that there's.
Any, everybody gets an opportunity.
There's an equal opportunity.
Perfect, no, I appreciate that, and did, did we check and did they did something or a strat, right?
They did.
And so do we know what what the upkeep costs over there?
So, in speaking with him, the upkeep costs over there are much higher because our property is not directly under a major scheme. Right, so we're not dealing with half of the runoff that they do over on the property on Stratton, there's also, uh, larger. Streams and rivers on the property that they manage at Stratton, which also, again, requires more drainage and things like that. Our property's a little more straightforward in terms of drainage and the work that they've done is is. It's pretty awesome, uh, and and will allow for quite a bit of water to pass through that property should we have a large storm event. Without having the same kind of requirements that Stratton does, so I know it was brought up at a trails meeting that, you know, Stratton does require quite a bit of maintenance, but there's also a lot of factors over there that are quite a bit different than on.
Okay, everybody good with Eric putting out an R and B?
Yes.
I don't, okay. All right, go for it. We don't need, we don't need to vote.
Okay, awesome.
Um, anything else?
Couple updates, sorry. I know, housing website is rebuilt, the economic development website is almost completely rebuilt and both of those hopefully will be launching soon. The website company that we built the town site through actually just transferred hands, they sold Municho to City Plus. Jeanette and I are working through the process of that migration and should have that site, it won't look any different. Uh, but the background and and ADA stuff is all updated to Drupal ten from Drupal seven, so that's in the process of happening. Our reporting deadline, they went ahead and pushed that to twenty twenty-five now instead of twenty twenty-four, I do have a a meeting scheduled, the one-on-one with someone from VLCT. And will most likely just be taking care of that reporting now anyway, but just know that that deadline was pushed to twenty twenty-five, should we find the need for for any additional reporting. Uh, we're we're still working on the business plan competition and the revolving loan fund, that stuff should be in front of you guys soon. And I did speak to Travis, we're gonna get a new rock at the town forest. Now we're reaching out to get bids from our local stone workers, Aviati, and the other ones that we spoke to prior to the. Last person to get the plaque into the rock because it's something that should have been done forever, so those are my updates.
But the rock is no more.
The rock is no more, we need a new rock and Travis is on top of it, so as soon as the rock is there, I know what the rock is made of. I can then reach out to those companies to get bids on getting the plaque installed, so apologies that it's taken this long, there were some unforeseen setbacks. And we just, we wanna get that one off the plate.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Richard going forward, what are your control?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Outside consumption permits?
Um, Mike. Uh, make a motion that we approve the outside consumption permits for Mount Snow Limited, Harriman Sundance Lodge, Corinthia Base Lodge. And for Handlebar Hospitality LLC, DBA Valley Newsland.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to come out?
Motion to come out of the board of liquor control.
Second. Aye, okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we have a consent agenda, we have minutes of March nineteenth, um, everybody was there, Sarah was on Zoom.
Motion to the ordinance of March twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Warrants?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. Of March thirtieth for the two hundred thirty-three thousand sixty-five dollars, sixty-five cents.
Make a motion that we approve the warrants of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for two hundred thirty-three dollars, two hundred thirty-three thousand sixty-five dollars, sixty-five cents.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I abstain.
There we go, okay, and Joe abstained, thank you, Joe. FYI, planning mission meets April eighth at six thirty, they also have a special. Meeting tomorrow at six thirty, am I correct?
Yes.
Um, Trails and Recommitment meets April ninth at six thirty. And the open meeting law webinar is on this card here, if anybody's interested at. Um, April seventeenth from ten to eleven thirty AM. Good. Uh, okay, so liaison reports, I know Dan, Dan's got one.
Yes, uh, got a call from Travis Briggs yesterday and that he found that. Storing the cardboard in a separate receptacle, that the shipping by trucking it. Costs more than it did that when they use stream recycling, I haven't gotten any numbers from him. But he seems to think that we should go back to doing the stream recycling, because it will cost us less money.
Yeah, he texted me, he is actually now, there is no more cardboard, that has been. Because Wind of Solid Waste doesn't wanna take it anymore, I mean, it goes in the the mix, but it's not separated any longer. Um, that didn't take long, we went through two containers and they have, it's costing. More than they, we were gonna save and, uh, so at this point, they're going back to the drawing board. See if I meant anything. Uh, yeah, they've terminated it. We've dumped two dumpsters and it's, it's been found that they can't fit enough, it, they can't fit enough, we can't fit enough cardboard. To make the trucking worthwhile in each dumpster, um, so we're going to explore other things, but it's off, it's been terminated.
Yeah, because before it was compacted.
Right, so. Um, so that's the update on that, any other liaison reports? Hearing none, um, we have executive session with fire department for personnel. And thank you all for coming and weather the storm.
Yeah.
And that wasn't good news about all that snow.
No. Well, now it keeps changing.
It's gonna, keeps going up.
Well, but but coming later.
Yeah, but now it's up to.
When did you say, Jeanette?
Are you making a motion to go into executive?
Yes, yes, once the, uh, I think you make a motion to go into executive session. Somebody say yes, I'm making a motion at eight seventy-nine, seven fifty-nine. For fire departments, promoting.